The meeting. I stream now and our auditor will be on in the meeting on the on the phone with us today.
Okay, you.
Mm hmm.
Keep it recording.
Okay, okay, what I what I'd like to do is I'll turn it over to you, Lori, is I'd like to give Chance an opportunity on uh, the bridge uh, naming issue uh, that needs to be done first time.
So Senator Minett had requested the Board of Commissioners um, name a bridge on Interstate sixty-four after one of the engineers who designed the bridge and I it's identical to a letter I prepared in the past. Uh, they needed an updated uh, copy of this resolution. So um, I would just ask that you all sign this and then I can scan it and send it to the.
Just let Gordon look that real quick and then I think we can go ahead and approve that.
So it's gonna be the Dale Workman Memorial Bridge?
Yes.
Okay. Where's that located, Chad?
On I sixty-four uh, between English and uh, Carefree, I believe, English and Carefree exits.
So it's it's actually going to be the Dale Gabby Workman Memorial Bridge.
That's the line you said.
Yeah, yeah. So I think at this point, you know, uh, it's a it's a bridge on the interstate and uh, before I call for a uh, a vote, does do we have any questions?
Yeah, what was it before? What is the name of it?
Done named.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve this request to rename this uh, bridge the Dale Gabby Workman Memorial Bridge.
So moved.
Second.
But.
Okay, will we vote one last time and comment? Not all favor. Three oh. They will sign this and let Chase process this.
I'll come back and present these others at the towards the end of the meeting.
That don't make us happy. They want it to drop there before five.
All right, I bet you can attest to that, so. Oh.
I'd like to have a copy of that, too.
You'll take an empty copy of this later.
I'll I'll make copies and then I'll return them later for the end of the meeting for these items and I'm gonna go scan this and send it to them.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Okay, Lauren, so.
Jessica.
All right, I am here to hold today. Um, first thing is just update on insurance renewal first and then I will be um, doing something for the English Fire Protection District. Um, first thing, everything regarding the property and casualty or renewal has been sent in to EMC their um, renewal audit at this time. So that's good. We're in good standing. That's wonderful. Um, just a couple of days ago on June the thirtieth, um, a guy by the name of Michael came down, met with Dan, also met with Jaden over at the Pavilion to go through an audit. Um, this is something that they're kind of getting back to that pre-COVID guideline of where they'll come out and do inspections. Um, a little bit different than what we've done over the past couple of years. Um, and they had a few recommendations and things that we need to go through and correct. And uh, Dan and I talked about the ones for here at the Judicial Complex and then Jaden and I had a conversation this afternoon about the ones for the Pavilion. Um, all of that information has to be uploaded into EMC, so um, I told them I'm here to help them in that process, any way I can possibly do so. Um, they would like to have that no later than eight seventeen of twenty twenty-five. However, if we send it then, then that could make things slower for that um, September renewal. So the quicker we can get it done, the quicker in our best interest.
Down here.
Well, that's great. So I will try to come over and get those pictures and get all of that stuff ready to go and I will go ahead and upload those and then Jaden already let me know today that she was working on the things over at the Pavilion today. So that was wonderful.
Very good.
Um, as far as the WC, which is your workers' compensation, um, in recent years, they've had me compile a ton of information. However, they used your most recent audit, which showed about a five percent increase um, in the amount of compensation paid out from year to year. Um, it was their suggestion to move forward with that five percent so that we hopefully will not incur a lot in the past. So um, uh, with your blessing, we'll move forward with that um, with the recommendation for EMC. Okay?
Okay.
Do you guys have any other questions as far as the insurance side?
Well, y'all have seen that's pretty good this year.
Yeah, it's it's been pretty seamless. They haven't um, last year, there were a lot more things that we had to fill out um, as far as getting information that wasn't uploaded into the Beacon or anything like that that they weren't able to pull. I basically had to fill all those in. Now that those are filled in, that's a little bit easier working moving forward, so.
So you think we'll be ready?
My hope is I might have at least a preliminary for you um, by the next Commissioners' meeting.
Great.
My hope.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's okay.
That's my hope.
Appreciate you.
Well, thank you.
No, really, Justin.
We know you will. You guys have been wonderful to work with and I really do appreciate um, your flexibility in dealing with because um, stepping in this role is kind of hard. Um, second thing that I have to address as a part of the English Fire Protection District. Um, with the death of Dale Roll, and we had a vacancy left on that board which his son Christian filled in up until that July first date. Now, Christian works outside of the town, doesn't usually get into town many times until six, seven PM. Um, one of the things in working with the Indiana Department of Local Government Finance, most of the time they want to meet during the day and that really is not allowable with Christian's schedule. So he and dad had a very long conversation about him really not feeling that that was probably in his best interest to serve in that um, role. So the board met um, last week on Wednesday and voted on Burnham to take his um, spot for the next four years. Um, but as the Commissioners of Crawford County, you have to accept that appointment and I have that ready for your signature.
Okay, with with that being said, uh, I'd entertain a motion to appoint Mr.
That is the same thing that that was for yours.
Just on for Mr. Gordon.
I'll make a motion for gone for the next four years.
Yeah, I have a second.
I'll second his motion.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Uh huh.
Uh, three oh.
All right.
Good luck, man.
I mean, you have to deal with me on a daily basis and I'm sure hell, I really enjoy that, so.
He's straight down.
Hmm, that's hard. That's a hard one for me to keep in mind. Why? But, and that's all I have um, for now and then um, and I will be assisting with their budget for this year, which
Yeah.
have done in the past.
Right.
It's just part of this thing.
Appreciate what you're doing.
Yep. It's all good. And then you'll have to muck out your B test and then. So then you know that that would be perfectly.
Big shoes to fill, too.
She can do it.
Jessica, if you need help with anything, let me know. I I know how he likes his green spices.
If he brings anything, snack on.
FYI, the only thing you have to do is uh, um, make homemade chocolate chip cookies and you can see no better. Yes, I will go and I just run in there and make them before. All right, thank you guys very much. If you need anything, please let me know.
Hey, Lauren.
Um, so uh, next we have Justin Kraft. Justin Kraft. Ooh. Okay. All right, then we have Thomas and Peggy McAlice.
Uh, I don't believe they're here either.
It's.
We have Ellen Myers.
Back again.
Ellen's here.
Mainly, I'm just wanting to let you know when you guys have helped and you're it's working together and it's more than just the town, the town, the the council and the game ward jumped in there. So we're making a little bit of headway. But we've not got it worked out yet. The girl can't still ride her scooter, can't come by. Uh, the guy up the street, the eighty-five-year-old, now he's been tackled twice. And some people down the street, they've got, of course, you're supposed to keep your dogs either pinned up or tied. Uh, one of them down there got their dog attacked again, got, well, it was new for them, but they did at least hear the commotion and called before it killed them. But there's definitely a serious issue going on with the dogs in English. And I'm since that article in the Clarion, I've been getting calls from all kinds of people wanting to know what to do about their dogs. You know, like I said, got problems, I take care of trying to get ours addressed. Uh, I still can't go outside without. I have to look and make sure the road is clear. My mom is now back and staying with me part-time. She's ninety-two, on a walker and on oxygen. And I've had to call the neighbors to come with shuffles to beat the dogs out of my yard. So we're not done. But it is being addressed and I appreciate the fact that you're trying to help us.
Correct.
What we did, we we called an emergency situation so that we could intervene in that. And I think, what did they get? Two dogs or three?
Two next to me and then they got up the street. Uh, I don't know how many up there. So but they've still got, like I said, a few up there and that's tho- those dogs up there are the ones that are going after that eighty-five-year-old man. I don't have a barrier with this.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's it's not like pick and choose. I know Sean, you got a couple up your neck of the woods, don't you?
I think they're gone.
Well, good.
MIA.
I want to inter- iterate, reiterate, it's really the responsibility of the town.
I I understand that. But it's taken a, it's this kind, it's taken the village to try to do it.
Uh, yeah, absolutely.
Well, after that, one man got that first, that eighty-five-year-old man, first time he got it. I know this isn't correct paperwork that would make you happy, but there's that many neighbors immediately responded, we've got a problem. So it's not just myself or one or two of us. There's definitely a problem going on up there. But I appreciate the help you gave us and I hope you continue to back us.
We'll do everything we can to help.
Yes, we will. Yeah. Thanks for keeping us updated.
Yeah, and and special thanks. She keeps me updated almost daily, so I appreciate that.
Great, Lauren.
Next, um, looks like Chance Bender again.
Had just enough time to get over there and get back. So I only have, we have your hand out there. Um, you made copies of this for, I'll keep the original on file, but I here's copies of this for whoever wants one.
Don't you email me?
Yes, I these are these items, these last items that I have are the ones that I emailed Gordon. Uh, it's the boilerplate language that we've adopted several times. The first one is for an unofficial detour across West Fork Road. I discussed this with Morton last week. Um, the state will be letting a project uh, this fall uh, to replace a um, small structure on State Road sixty-two. And we feel that a lot of traffic will be diverted across West Fork Road trying to get to. So what this will do is during the closure, NDOT will reimburse the county for any repairs that are required to be made after the unofficial detour ends. This is similar to what we've done with a few other projects on Hope School Road and um, Colbert Roll Road.
Okay, I'm doing one at a time.
Mm hmm.
Okay, what you just referred to is an MOU with the West and West Fork Road with the NDOT. I would need a motion to approve that. Um, then run of understanding, uh, so we can move forward with that.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and go with this to the MOU, this West Fork Road.
Yeah, I have a second.
Got a second.
And you have any question before we vote? And no questions, all in favor?
Uh huh.
I might say our attorney has reviewed these.
Yeah, they were in good order. I would have spoken after they were.
Hey, James.
Okay, second one is for uh, same type of agreement. Uh, this will cover uh, Wind dot Cave Road and Knights Road uh, that the state is using uh, those two facilities. This is actually an official detour um, because the state is responsible for the bridge over I sixty-four. And we had gotten quite a few calls about the amount of traffic on uh, especially on Knights Road and concerned about the extremely heavy um, weights. So I contacted Seymour District, which we don't ordinarily deal with. And they have agreed to establish this official detour with us and it is the uh, same situation that uh, in after the bridge is completed, uh, we will get together and they will reimburse the county for any repairs uh, on that official route and that route is from State Road sixty-two up Wind dot Cave Road and then down Knights Road back to State Road sixty-six.
Well, I might add on both of these, once you guys negotiate what we believe we should be reimbursed, then they will have a separate agreement for you to sign for the actual payment.
Okay, this is their guarantee that they will do.
Right.
Okay.
It's their guarantee they'll negotiate good faith.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's not guarantee of any payment. It's a guarantee they will negotiate good trade.
Okay, thank you, Chance. So uh, I'll need a a motion to approve the official detour on Windout Cave Road.
I'll make a motion to approve Windout Cave Road for a detour.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second his motion.
Before we vote on that, do you have any more questions? If not, all in favor?
Yeah.
Three oh.
I want to say that I appreciate Chance on this. He kind of squeezed him into this thing. I think they forgot about his being.
We appreciate them replacing a seven million dollar bridge because unfortunately we can't can't afford the traffic on the road either.
That's supposed to be done.
It's supposed to be done by the first of November.
Okay.
Are they doing both sides?
Yeah, they're replacing both bridges, yes. All I have and Laura?
Um.
Lisa, she's here or is she?
We have that folder, but Wendy, did you have anything you wanted to discuss?
Um, yeah, does the person or more have anything they want to go first?
I'm I'm sorry, didn't hear you, Wendy.
Do you guys have anything? Do you want to go first before her?
Well, we can. If Gordon wants to wants to go, it doesn't make any.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll just do, I only have one thing.
Okay.
Um, I have the ordinance that was discussed at the last meeting to rename a uh, right-of-way uh, over off of uh, State Road sixty-six. And it's a fifty-foot right-of-way on, it's a private a right-of-way and they're asking that it be named Barron Lane, B-A-R-R-O-N. It was named after a young man, Baron Barks, that died from complications of uh, childhood diabetes that he was in his early, early to mid twenties. And so these people that own the property have asked that this be named after him and I've got the um, legal description for it from a survey, which is, I'm not gonna read it, but it's uh, fifty feet wide by um, one thousand two hundred eighty-two point one six feet. Uh, it's a long rectangle strip that goes uh, from the middle of State Road sixty-six back to the um, west, I believe. Thinking I'm right, going to go goes to the west, um, that one thousand two hundred eighteen point one six feet. So I would recommend that the Commissioners uh, approve this.
Okay.
And this is the official ordinance naming of the road.
Okay. The county ordinance here to rename this.
I need to give it the, the, the number. It's a Crawford County Ordinance Number.
Zero seven zero eight twenty twenty-five.
Say it again.
Zero seven zero eight one twenty-five.
And it's ordinance naming is a certain real property, a private right-of-way is Barron Lane.
Okay, I'll need a motion to name this right-of-way Barron Lane. Do I have a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion to go ahead and uh, name this right-of-way Barron Lane.
Okay, do I have a second?
I will second that motion.
Okay.
And it's a private right-of-way. It's not creating a county road. It's just a private right-of-way.
Okay. Okay, do I have any further discussions on this before we vote? If not, all in favor?
Uh.
Um, three oh.
May I get a copy? That I have nothing else. That's it?
Yes, sir.
Get back, sir.
Thank you.
Wendy, you got anything?
No, not right now. Go ahead, put your head and we'll see.
Am I ready?
Will we end up at here?
Yep.
Okay, so you might have to set your phone closer to Morton if you can't hear.
I I I can hear you now.
Okay, so I have Payroll Dockets six six, six twenty and three.
Okay. I'll need a motion to approve Payroll Dockets uh, six six, six twenty, six twenty-three.
So moved.
Second?
Got it. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Um.
Uh, payroll dockets approved. Wendy?
Coming on down.
I want to sign each one of those for.
Yep, got it. All right, done, Wendy.
Okay, next we have the minutes for six ten, six seventeen and six twenty-seven. Six, six ten was the regular meeting, six seventeen and six twenty-seven was special meeting.
Okay. Well, I have reviewed the minutes, I think, and I just had a copy of those uh, um, so I would need a uh, uh, motion to approve the meeting minutes for sixteen, six seventeen and six twenty-seven.
I have reviewed those minutes myself, Morton, on my kind of motion to approve them. And I will second this motion.
Okay, I have motion and second, all in favor? Uh, three oh for minutes.
Yes, yeah, those ones I just gave you, those are the ones to sign. The other ones are just your copies.
And you do have the election board minutes, but that's just for your rolls keeping.
Okay. All right.
Good to go, Wendy.
Next, we have the claim dockets from six seventeen to current.
Okay, claims dockets to be approved from six seventeen to current, current docket. Uh, I would need a motion to approve the claims.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the claims from six seventeen to present.
Second?
Yes, like a second on the claims.
Okay, all in favor? And five, three oh. That cover what you needed. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I might know this, I might note for the meeting, meeting minutes is that we have not received uh, any uh, claims to review for the clerk's office or the treasurer's office as requested.
That's the clerk, it's a, it's a report, clerk report and treasurer report.
Right. Reports, whatever.
Let this here, right, Morton?
No, that's not bad.
Yes.
No, that's not bad.
No.
Am I good to go, Laura?
Uh, yep, we are good, um.
Uh, actually, we're not done yet.
Mm hmm.
Uh, so the clerk brought down a sales order agreement with ESMS, which was her election software and systems. Uh, we have provided that to the county attorney, Gordon Engel, and I don't know if he needs more time to review that or if he is good to go with that.
No, I just, I just saw it for the first time today.
We, we will be looking at that, Wendy, and uh, with his approval, hopefully at our next regular scheduled meeting.
That, that's good.
Okay.
We, you know, there's the first part on the, as far as approving the increase in payment to uh, election volun- uh, election worker volunteers, but they're not volunteering. Well, essentially they are when you look at what they get paid for a day's work. But um, I don't have uh, problem this being approved subject to, and it's got to be approved by the council as well. They got appropriate money. But you guys can.
Yeah. I might come next meeting to do that.
Okay.
And so we'll do it all at the next meeting in August.
So this is going to be tabled.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, I'm good, Wendy, if you have anything else.
Well, I don't have anything else.
Anybody?
Uh, Gordon? You have anything?
Nope.
Uh, Dan?
Nope.
Larry? Uh.
Uh, I just have one thing real quick, and and the only thing that I need is just to uh, give this to Morton, let him take some time to review it, and just get back with me at some point. But what it is, it's a a service agreement with MedPro disposal, and it's, it's a two-fold, one, it uh, it's going to get rid of uh, medical ways like our sharps, needles, uh, that we uh, that we get accumulated. Um, the cost is three hundred ninety dollars per year. Um, they will stop by every three months. Uh, they, they leave a thirty-two gallon corrugated box, and we uh, put all these sharps in, and then they will pick them up. I don't expect that we will need more than that, but if it does happen, which is highly uh, that it's not, if, if there's an additional charge of a hundred and twenty-five dollars per container. But I don't see that happening. And also, the big one is the um, they are also licensed, and they will be taking any of our scheduled narcotics that we have that are expired, and that's from, like, our panel, uh, uh, some of the big drugs that are, that are DEA, uh, watched over. So they'll take these expired drugs, and they actually will send a report to the DEA as well, and we're going to know what we've turned in so that it matches our records.
Yeah.
So, and that's three hundred eighty-nine dollars per year, and should I need any additional payers, it'll be another three year, but I'll let Gordon have this.
What you're going by on?
Well, it says by seven point two, but he said, you know, I, because I told him that you guys meet the, the second Tuesday of each month, so um, if he wants to, just to make a decision or, or if it all works.
Okay.
He can get back with me next meeting. Or if he has questions, Gordon, on the very back of that last page, I got my name, phone number, and email address on the very, very back.
Okay, well, we can, we can approve it then the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, with that being, being said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, and then I will second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Leading adjournance. Thanks everyone for coming.